Thanks everyone for coming out. Tonight we've got our Lucky Joseph, who'll be speaking to us on the purpose of watching and waiting. This is our last Hebron study session, and then Hebron will be hopefully next weekend, God willing. So to open up tonight, we'll just start with a word of prayer, if you could all please stand. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for all of your great and wonderful blessings which you give to us. We thank you now for the time which we have to come together around your word, to be able to read from it and study it. We pray that you will please be with us tonight in all that we do, and may all that we do be to your honour and glory. We pray that we may be able to increase in our knowledge and understanding of this part of Scripture, of the Olivet prophecy, and we especially pray that you'll be able to help us to see the purpose of watching and waiting, as we are now in the last days, and we know your Son's return is soon to come. And we pray for that day to come soon, Father, and it is through your Son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ we pray now. Amen. Alright, to introduce his thoughts this evening, Lucky's asked that we read Matthew 24, verses 1 to 14, and then 36 to the end, and I'll ask Jess if he'd come up and speak and do the reading for us.
Matthew 24, first 14 verses and from verse 36 on. "And Jesus went out and departed from the temple; and his disciples came to him, for to show him the buildings of the temple. And Jesus said unto them, 'See not all these things; verily I say unto you, There shall not be left here one stone upon another that shall not be thrown down.' And as he sat upon the mount of Olives, the disciples came unto him privately, saying, 'Tell us, when shall these things be, and what shall be the sign of thy coming and of the end of the world?'" "And Jesus answered and said unto them, 'Take heed, that no man deceive you; for many shall come in my name, saying, 'I am Christ, and shall deceive many;' and ye shall hear of wars and rumours of wars; see that ye be not troubled, for all these things must come to pass, but the end is not yet; for nation shall rise against nation, and kingdom against kingdom; and there shall be famines and pestilences, and earthquakes in diverse places. All these are the beginning of sorrows. Then shall they deliver you up to be afflicted, and shall kill you; and ye shall be hated of all nations for my name's sake; and then shall many be offended, and shall betray one another, and shall hate one another; and many false prophets shall rise, and shall deceive many; and because iniquity shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold; but he that shall endure unto the end, the same shall be saved. And this gospel of the kingdom shall be preached in all the world, for a witness unto all nations, and then shall the end come.'" Verse 36. "But of that day and hour knoweth no man, no, not the angels of heaven, but my Father only; but as the days of Noah were, so shall also the coming of the Son of Man be; for as in the days that were before the flood, they were eating and drinking, marrying and giving in marriage, until the day that Noah entered into the ark; and he knew not until the flood came and took them all away. So shall also the coming of the Son of Man be. Then shall two be in the field, the one shall be taken, and the other left; two women shall be grinding at the mill, the one shall be taken, and the other left. Watch therefore, for ye know not what hour your Lord doth come; but know this, that if the good man of the house had known in what watch the thief would come, he would have watched, and would not have suffered his house to be broken up. Therefore be ye also ready, for in such an hour as ye think not, the Son of Man cometh, who then is a faithful and wise servant, whom his lord hath made ruler over his household, to give them meat in due season. Blessed is that servant, whom his lord, when he cometh, shall find so doing; verily I say unto you, that he shall make him ruler over all his goods. But, and if that evil servant shall say in his heart, 'My lord delayeth his coming', and shall begin to smite his fellow servants, and to eat and drink with the drunken, the lord of that servant shall come in a day when he looketh not for him, and in an hour that he is not aware of him; and shall cut him asunder, and appoint him his portion with the hypocrites: there shall be weeping and gnashing of teeth."
Is this working? Alright, hi everyone. Nice to see you. So what we're going to do tonight is have a bit of a look at this purpose of watching and waiting. Christ tells us about it in this section of Scripture. It's the last section of the notes, well, the last before the conclusion. And yeah, there's a couple of different lessons that we're going to try and pull out of it. But instead of me sprouting forth and telling you everything, we're going to get down and do some work ourselves. We'll work in your little table groups. I've forgotten my notes. And you're going to answer some questions to try and work out. Yeah, so you can develop an understanding. Yeah, so we'll just get into it, I suppose. So the first sort of thing that we're going to have a look at is the context. Who is Christ actually speaking to? Where is he speaking? Why is he speaking? And what are they looking for? What are we watching and waiting for? So I'll write them up on the board, nice little step ladder. Who is Christ speaking to? These answers are sort of all in the early part of Matthew 24, I think. Does anyone know where the other records of this prophecy are? Yep, that's one of them. Yeah, you would know after doing the last class, wouldn't you? Where is he speaking? That's the next question. So what's the location? Where has he come from? Sort of things like that. You can really take it wherever you want. Why? Now, this ties into the question that is asked. Why? And what? Question? Alright, so there are the questions that I want you to have a look at. I'll give you the... So Matthew 24 is the place you can start. Make sure you check the other records as well. And the other records. Mark 13. In particular, verse 1 to 37 is the corresponding record. And Luke 21, verse 5 to 36. So who, where, why, and what? That's what we're trying to work out, the context of this little section that we just read. So if you just do that on your own in your table groups or whoever you're next to, and then I'll give you maybe 10 minutes, that's a very generous amount of time. And then we'll come back, and I'll ask you to tell me what you found out. Makes sense? Sweet. Alright. Have we all had enough time to get through all of those questions? Yep, 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 and yep. Okay, so I've upgraded my markers now, which is exciting. What about this first one? Who's he speaking to? Thanks, Eden. I'm not going to bother writing the answers up. The disciples. Where did you get that from? No, that's alright, I accept that. Is he speaking to any disciples in particular? Ah, where did you find that one? Great. Look what we get when we compare records. See, I didn't even know that before Josh or Brad mentioned it about five minutes ago. And you can also look at like the actual content that we're told in here. It's a sign of the end of the age. So it talks about that, but then it's also got lessons that we can take out of it. So in a way, we are the audience at the same time. What about where is he speaking? What's he... Where's he come from? Where's he ended up? Great. Now, if I was organised, I would have found how far that is, where that is, and showed you on a map, but you would just have to visualise it. Did you find that in Matthew 24, Mark 13, or Luke 21? Awesome. What about this next question? The why and what? So why is he speaking, and what question is Jesus asked? Yep, so they're asking, what's the signs of the times? What's their exact question? They say, "Tell us when will these things be, and what will be the sign of your coming, and of the end of the age." Did anyone pick up a difference between some of the questions? Apart from those guys for a second. Did any of you guys find a... An extra item, an extra question, or element that's mentioned in Matthew 24? Tell us the... I literally told those girls the answer. Yes, great. So in Matthew 24, it adds, well, not adds, but it just also records, "and of the end of the age." So what will be the sign of your coming is sort of where the other chapters are drawing the line on the question. But then it goes, "and of the end of the age." So when is the end? What are the signs of the end? And if you go through this next, the next couple of verses, you're told all about the different signs, and what we need to watch for, and what we need to be waiting for, which is the important thing for tonight, I suppose. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a look at those two words. Now, they don't actually... Well, waiting, in my version, and I checked the... So the ESV and the King James, I don't think they say waiting. At least not where I was looking. So we're going to look at the word "watch". Does anyone have e-Sword on their phone or anything? Enough people do. "Watch", and the word or the phrase is "be ready", that I want to focus on. And these occur in... Verse 42 of Matthew 24, and verse 44. So what we want to do for the next little bit is try and work out what these words mean. I'll write it here. What do they mean? And maybe some other occurrences of where they... I don't think I can spell occurrences. Two R's or one? Ah, it'll do. So other times where it occurs in Scripture, and what the context is to these specific words being used. So, as I said, in Matthew, they pop up in verse 42. I'll read that. That says, "Therefore stay awake, for you do not know on what day your Lord is coming", which also doesn't say "watch". Does anyone have a King James, and does that say "watch"? Verse 42 says "watch". Can you read that, please? Yeah, so there's a big clue on what the word "watch" means, if you compare different versions, which is a great thing to do. And then verse 44 says, "Therefore you must also be ready..." And then verse 44 says, "Therefore you must also be ready, for the Son of Man is coming at an hour you do not expect". What's the word in the KJV? Says "be ready"? Yeah, alright, cool. So the other two things that I want you to have a look at. Stay awake or watch in verse 42 and in verse 44, be ready. And sort of get a definition of what it means, check the other occurrences of it throughout the New Testament to see what sort of connotations go along with it. Does that make sense? Sweet. Back to you guys. Alright, have we got answers for both? I'm looking at Ezra Nichols. Have you had enough time to contemplate both of those words? Or would you like more time? Your group, not you individually. That's right, I'll tell you what be ready is about if you tell me what watching means. Anybody can tell me what watching means. Be vigilant, great. Were there a couple of other? I've got the question. I've also got the answer. Sort of has the idea of keeping awake, doesn't it? As be vigilant, wake, be watchful, keep awake. And surprisingly Esord lists watch as another word for watch. So go for it. What about, did anyone find any other places where it's used? Great, yeah. Yeah, that's a really good example. I was going to pick on Josh to tell us about that, but... Do you have anything you want to add to the ten virgins being a good example or not? Yeah. It does, it's a seamless transition. Yeah, there's actually a fair few parables around this area of scripture that talk about being watchful. And obviously you have the virgins that were watchful and they got in and the ones that weren't and were unorganised and they didn't. Great lesson to take from that. Now, did anybody get to waiting? No? Nah? Alright, so the be ready, sorry, waiting is what the notebook refers to it as. Yeah, so that's got the idea of being prepared, of readiness, which sometimes Esord blows my mind in how simple it is in its definitions. But it doesn't, so be, being ready, it's not just about passively being ready and just passively waiting for Christ's return to come, which is what they're looking for at the end of these times. Yeah, so we've actually got to be doing something and living in a certain way. Actively waiting is a key element to this, which we might have a look at in a minute. But first, there is, I believe, when we talk about watching, so it says in verse forty-two and verse forty-four, what don't we know? Yes, great. So, next couple of questions. Probably the final questions actually. We're going to have a look at this idea of the hour and the day. What are we told about the return? So, hour... ...slash day, other uses? Would be nice to get some. Other uses of this phrase? And when, when this word or these couple of words are used, there's another theme that sort of comes out. And so what I want you to also look at is what are we told about Christ's return? I'll give you a helpful chapter. 1 Thessalonians 5. Somewhere in there is a nice opening for you to dive into. Yeah, so once you get to here, in, actually I'll give you the verse, in the start of it. So from verse one to two. And then I want you to sort of follow this idea throughout the Bible so you, and then you can tell me with conviction what we're told about the return and how it happens. Does that make sense? I don't know if Josh's shake was genuine or not. He's a smart guy, he'll figure it out. Alright, sweet. I'll give you a couple of minutes to do that. Alright, how are we going? Have we got some answers to the questions? Yes, no? I have received no head nods or shakes, so I'm very confused. Okay, good, now we're all getting nods. That's great. So, this hour and a day, did anyone find apart from 1 Thessalonians 5, any other occurrences of it? Sweet. Revelation 3 verse 3 says, remember then what you received and heard, keep it and repent. If you will not wake up, I will come like a thief and you will know at what hour I will come against you. That's a great verse. And it says wake up in verse two as well, so that's all about watching and waiting. What about, did anyone else come up with any other verses for hour and a day? Hour, day, and relating to Christ's return? That's awesome. Yeah, that really ties all in everything. There is, was that in Luke, what chapter is that in? Luke 12. We'll close in Luke 21 in a minute. But what about the, how is Christ going to return? In what manner? Yes, awesome. Do you have any other, apart from 1 Thessalonians 5, any other times where that's mentioned? That way of Christ returning? Yes, yeah. On top, there's more in Revelation 2. Revelation 16 verse 15, it pops up. That says, behold, I am coming like a thief. Blessed is the one who stays awake, keeping his garment on that he may not go about naked and be seen exposed. Another one is 2 Peter 3 verse 10. If I find 2 Peter. Alright, 1 Peter, 2 Peter 3 verse 10. But the day of the Lord will come like a thief and the heavens will pass away with a roar and the heavenly bodies will be burned up and dissolved and the earth and the works that are done on it will be exposed. Now, so we know how Christ is coming, like a thief in the night. I did have some more questions, but I think I'll just tell you about them. So Luke 21 verse 34 to 36, if we go there, we'll finish here. Would anyone like to volunteer to read this for us? Thanks. Yes, please. Cool, thanks. So this sort of flips it from watching externally, watching outwardly for Christ's return, to watching inwardly, which we have to be doing at the same time. This is how we can be actively waiting. So you've got to look out that you're doing the right things. 1 Thessalonians 5 and from verse four to 11, that's also got some other ideas about how you can be actively waiting, how you can watch yourself, what you need to be doing. And Matthew 25 verse 33 to 46 are some more examples of what you can be doing. That's the, if I'm hungry, feed, you fed me. So looking out for other people, naked and clothed me. So yeah, that's it. Hopefully you have a bit of a better understanding now of watching, waiting and the purpose of it. Yeah, thanks.
Alright, well thanks for all your work, Locky, and for leading us tonight. And I hope everyone's really enjoyed working through this section and learned a bit more about watching and waiting. And we all hope, we hope that you've really found these study sessions useful as we head towards Hebron. So as far as upcoming events, we have a study on Saturday, God willing, where Uncle Dave Hill will be leading us. And of course, the following weekend will be Hebron. So looking, I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. So we'll just close tonight with a word of prayer through Josh, if you'd please send.
Thanks. Yahweh our Father in heaven, we come before you, thanking you very much for the time we've had tonight to consider your wonderful word. And we thank you immensely for providing your word, that we can read about the words that the greatest man who ever lived spoke, the words from you. And we pray that we will take these words to heart and keep our eyes open, watching for your son's return and watching out for our fellow brothers and sisters and young people and watching internally our own lives and where we are headed so that we're always prepared and ready for that time. Because at times we can struggle to make it real in our lives and in the forefront of our minds at all times, but we know that it could happen at any point. And we so desire it because it will resolve all the world's problems and will bring perfect righteousness, perfect peace and the world that you had planned from the beginning to fruition. We can't wait for that time and we pray that you remember us all for good in that day as we ask this prayer through our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.